Good evening. I'd like to call to order the special meeting of the Methacton School District Board of Directors, November 8th, 2018. Please rise for the pledge. By way of attendance, we have all board members here this evening. Recognition of guests and scheduled speakers, I turn it over to Dr. Zerby.
Thank you, Ms. President. This evening, I'll be making a presentation from the podium, and I ask that the members of the School Board of Directors, please join me in the front row of the auditorium, and as you're doing so, please take your chairs and push them off to the side. Thank you very much.
Good evening. Please be advised that due to the build-out of the stage here for musical and play performances and as a result of the Arkola Auditorium being under construction, the Board is limited to one microphone this evening for which they will share to ask questions. I apologize in advance for any inconvenience. So this evening, a notice was provided of a special meeting here November 8th, 2018, where I, Superintendent of Schools, will present information on the current status of the district, including programs, enrollment facilities, strategic vision for the future. Again, this meeting is perpetuated by the need for the Board to address the information contained in the 2016 Facilities Assessment Study of all district facilities, and where this same study projected an investment of $14 million into Arrowhead Elementary School in the next three to five years. Tonight's objective is rather simple: to provide information and to seek feedback from the public. The two overarching questions: what other information should we consider, and what does our community believe we ought to do? So tonight is really a starting point, the start of an important conversation regarding the future of the district. This conversation deals with our path forward while considering a number of opportunities and challenges. At the top of the opportunity-challenge list is what to do at the Arrowhead Elementary School. My goal this evening is to share with the public and the Board of School Directors a number of matters that I know are important to consider when determining the future of this school, and ultimately, the future of the district. As a reminder, the Board does not plan to take any action this evening. Their intent is to hear information and to gather feedback. As Superintendent, I simply plan to share information this evening, and in the future, following the feedback and the review of other relevant information on this matter, I will make a recommendation to the Board, but only after I'm fully informed. As a note of importance before I begin, please be advised that the district contracted, again, with the firm Mylon &amp; McBroom of Chester, Connecticut, to perform an update to their 2016 student enrollment projections. I'm just gonna pause for a second. Are we good? Okay. To their 2016 enrollment projections, the update was performed by the same vendor, Mylon &amp; McBroom, for which the district used their enrollment projections previously to consider and ultimately decide to close Audubon Elementary School in February of 2017. Furthermore, I will be referring to a few aspects of that information from the updated enrollment report this evening. The full report will be uploaded along with this presentation and the video of this meeting by the end of the day Friday, 11/9/2018. Mylon &amp; McBroom are scheduled to be at the November 20, 2018 work session of the Board to present in full that updated projection report. So regarding procedures this evening, following my presentation, the Board requests that they receive feedback from the public, and they do that through a mechanism called courtesy of the floor. So any persons interested in speaking are kindly asked to sign in at the table in the hall, in the back of the auditorium, at any point during the presentation, or during any point of the public comment courtesy of the floor session. So you don't need to do that now, but you can at any time during the term of this meeting. In order to provide ample opportunity for all persons to speak, the Board will provide the customary four minutes for each person's comments. And then following the meeting, tonight's presentation will be, and the enrollment projections, will be posted to the -- will be posted to the -- will be posted to the district website, and we will be seeking public comment in the form of an online form up until and through the 27th of November. Is it my phone? Are you gonna switch it?
Yeah.
Testing, one, two, okay. So in an effort to help everyone here, and those that watch afterwards, understand in its most simplistic form how and why we are beginning this conversation, I wanted to make sure that the decision on February 21st, 2017, to close the Audubon Elementary School was made considering a number of factors, and knowing that a one-building closure then would perpetuate this discussion at some point in the near future. And that discussion is around three high-level topics: to renovate Arrowhead Elementary School, to replace Arrowhead Elementary School with new construction, or to close Arrowhead Elementary School, consolidate and redistrict. We knew that from the Facilities Assessment in 2016 that many of our buildings were in need of maintenance and major systems replacements. Arrowhead Elementary School was projected to need about $14 million in repairs. So this evening, I will be sharing information on the following matters: the status of the district, including mission profile, our academic -- core academic programs, enrollment, facilities use, and finances, including strategic plan, opportunities and challenges, enrollments, what has changed, debt considerations, and our next steps. So the status of the district, it is critical that we start here. Any major district decision needs to be grounded in the mission and vision of the district, taking into account the core values that ultimately communicate who we are and what we aspire to be. So regardless of whether we seek to purchase a textbook or determine to renovate a building, we need to stay grounded in the principles that are listed here: our mission, our vision, and our core values. The Methacton School District is a public school district located in southeastern Pennsylvania. We have an enrollment of 4,700 students, we serve over 13,000 households, and it's a combination of two townships, Lower Providence and Warsetor. We have $109 million budget, we employ nearly 600 employees, and we have seven school buildings. In terms of performance and identity, Methacton School District is considered to be among one of the best school districts in Pennsylvania, and is further considered to be one of the safest as well. Overall, Methacton School District continues to receive a grade of A+ from the likes of the Niche Survey as part of their annual Best Schools publication, and along with U.S. News &amp; World Report continually listing Methacton in their best high school publications on an annual basis. As displayed here, Methacton High School is ranked 1,066 out of 20,500 public schools reviewed. They also share that Methacton High School is ranked 27th-best high school in Pennsylvania. These are just some of the examples of how we perform, and are compared to others across the state and nationally. These are accolades that we are very proud of, but are not content with. We continually strive to improve and do more for our children and this community. To better understand how we attain such accolades of our performance, and to articulate the current structure of our overall operation, it is important to understand what core and special academic programming is available to students. It is also important to share that while we have a rigorous and varied curriculum, we also provide a number of extracurricular activities at each level that contribute to the overall growth of our students. So on the slide here in front of you, we have the K-4 educational programming. Our core subjects being English Language Arts, Math, Science, Social Studies, and that is offered in a K, which is a half-day K program, and a 1, 2, 3, and 4 arrangement. We also have specials that include health for grades 3 and 4, physical education, music, art, and library, with a focus on achievement and growth through individual and small-group instruction, exploration of concepts, hands-on learning, interaction, and technical and problem-solving. At the 5-6 educational level, we have a team structure. Teachers are responsible for ELA and one remaining core subject, Math, Science, and Social Studies. In grade 6, we have, again, a team concept where teachers specialize in one core subject: English Language Arts, Math, Science, Geography, Reading, and Writing. We have specials that include Health, Physical Education, Music, Art, Library, Computer Science, and Technology Education. Students continue to have opportunities to grow academically, socially, emotionally, as they become part of teams and travel between classes throughout the day. When we look at the educational programming at the Arkola Intermediate School in grades 7 and 8, we have a team structure where we have teachers that specialize in one particular subject, either English, Math, Reading, Science, Social Studies, and grade 8 the same. Students are instructed in World Language and Literature, and we have expressive arts, which include Art, Music, Technology Education, Family Consumer Science. And the team's concept continues with different configurations and opportunities as students grow to be more independent. When we look at the 9-12 educational programming, we have core areas of English, Math, Science, and Social Studies again, but students select courses from among four core areas, and electives derived from those four core areas, as well as additional electives within the AP, Honors, or Academic Rigor. And we have additional electives that's in addition to the core areas, which is Art, Music, Computer Education, Family Consumer Science, Health and Physical Education, Music, Technology Education, and World Language. The operation of our schools is grounded in the core academic program and high level of rigor. All of this is supported in a number of ways, so that we can enable our children to reach their greatest potential. And we provide some of the following services: nursing, gifted education, school counseling, mental health services, occupational therapy, physical therapy, speech, student assistance programs, special education services, English language development, to name a few. Overall, these services are provided by district and at times contracted professionals to help meet the varied needs of our students. The educational programming and services are provided to some 4,800 students on a daily basis. The official enrollment for 2018-19 is 4,795. As a point of reference, the use of the student count on October 1 of a given year is provided to the Pennsylvania Department of Education as the annual enrollment count, and is circled in green here on the slide in two locations. The first one in the upper chart is showing the October 2018, October 1 enrollment of 4,795, and it might be difficult based on the way the stage is set up here in the tables, but below that, there is a number that's actually two students less, which is the October 2017 enrollment. So while a gain of two students may not seem very significant, it does mark the first time that our enrollment has increased since the height of enrollment in 2007, 2008. The Board establishes policy, as with any important matter of the district, and requires the administration to operate schools based on Board-established policies. The Board establishes the, generally speaking, the Board establishes policies that are grounded either in law, or policies that are grounded in efficient operation of schools. Class-size policy is one such grounded in the efficient operation of schools, and allows the Board to adjust depending on needs of the district. So while, for example, while employment policies that require background checks for employees are grounded in law, and are the same from district to district, a class-size policy may vary. However, while the Board may have the flexibility in setting parameters for this policy, there is research and common acceptable practice within the education market, given our state and our geographic location. As Superintendent of Methacton School District, I can attest that this policy is consistent with those in surrounding public school districts, and is reasonable and reflective of the historical design of our schools, their classrooms, and reflects the expectations of our community. It should also be known that the Methacton School District has administrative regulations associated with Board policies. One such administrative regulation is that we target 22 students in grades K through 2 when planning homerooms in each elementary school. This is a guideline that complies with policy and is used to target effective use of space and instruction. Therefore, please know that we determined a one-building closure on the basis of an administrative guideline within the policy limits, that determined feasibility to utilize space back in 2017. In an effort to convey a picture of the current class size and how the policy is applied, this chart illustrates, based on data from October 1 of 2018, the class size, the average class size, and limits at each level. For secondary schools, like the Arkola and high school, this chart references the number of classes under the policy threshold of 15. Please note that while at the high school, we have a number of classes greater than 30, these generally have more than one adult assigned. Please note that scheduling and class size at all levels is a very challenging process. Our principals do a tremendous amount of work to ensure that the students not only get their core academics, but are provided for in their individual needs and interests within homeroom, elective, and co-curricular programming. In addition, our principals have improved substantially in leveraging the schedule, time, and available resources to not only meet the needs of our students, but to leverage a more efficient operation. To further illustrate this point of efficiency, you may recall, we had a low of 278 students in Arrowhead not too long ago, and in our largest elementary school, Woodland, in terms of space, another 302 students. The decision to close Audubon and consolidate and redistrict resulted in an evening out of our enrollment across the district, and a greater use of our facilities and efficiencies. As a district, we provide programs and services to nearly 4,800 students on a daily basis. We do this through a structure where nine elected School Board Directors are responsible for hiring a Superintendent, setting policy, and approving an annual budget. The Superintendent is a chief executive officer responsible for the operation of schools, supervision of programs, services, and staffing. This work is supported by department directors responsible for areas like curriculum, pupil services, technology, safety, business, and facilities, to name a few. Together with building principals, assistant principals, and program supervisors, the administration provides support and direction to students, parents, and staff. The educational program, the operation of the schools, and all the supporting educational and operational tasks associated with the day-to-day operation of the district are done by talented, dedicated, and passionate employees of the district. These charts simply show that it takes quite a number of people to support the operation of a district and to attain an A-plus rating. While I would like to take credit for the success of the district, the simple truth is that these employees and the support of our parents and the community is what sets us apart, and that is a significant consideration in any large-scale decision like the one before us. Given the programs and services provided, and the staffing used to provide them, it is further needed to share where we provide these services and how we use the current space in our buildings. This slide is one of those slides reminiscent of our discussion nearly two years ago. The use of space was part of an overall discussion and challenge in making a decision on the closure of one or two schools. I believe that this is appropriate, it is appropriate to revisit this information, and to help the Board and public understand what the impact of the one-building closure resulted in, and how our programming at the remaining schools has changed, and how the use of space has been impacted since we last spoke on this topic. Please know that for information purposes only, I have included each building chart in the appendix of this presentation, in the instance that further review is necessary. In summary, this chart shows each school building, the space available, and the type of space needed to deliver our program. The chart lists the data from 2016, when we last presented prior to the closure of Audubon Elementary School, and then we also list the use of space as of October 2018. For clarity, back in 2016, we determined that in order to close a school or two, we needed to determine how many homeroom-eligible spaces were in the remaining buildings in order to continue operating the elementary schools in our prescribed fashion. This is all practical purpose, this is in all practical purpose on the basis of homeroom count, where a single teacher is assigned to class not more than 25 in grades 3 and 4, and not more than 22 in grades K through 2, where that assigned teacher was responsible for providing instruction in the four core academic areas. With this premise, we categorize all spaces in each of the buildings and count each as listed in this chart. As a result of this work, in 2017, we shared that throughout the district, we had open 17 spaces, I mean, homeroom-eligible spaces, eight of which were in the four remaining elementary schools. As a result of the closure of Audubon Elementary School, and a redistricting that impacted all of the five of the then elementary sending areas, along with other programmatic changes, in just the last two years, shows us that two open homeroom-eligible spaces are available as of October 2018. This chart lists the school buildings where these classrooms are located. This chart summarizes the facilities in the district, including non-student buildings, such as the Administration Building and the Bus Terminal, we'll call it the Facility Building, or Transportation Building. This listing summarily shows that the age of last additions and major renovations, and may help us better understand why we are discussing the Arrowhead Elementary School here this evening and going forward. Considering that there has not been a major renovation or addition in more than 41 years at the time of this report, which would today be, I believe, 43 years, is telling along with the fact that the closest building to Arrowhead in terms of last additions and major renovations is nearly half the number of years than Arrowhead, which I believe This next slide, and it's noted at the top, is for illustration purposes only. I am not expecting you to read this at this moment in time, but it will be an attachment to the presentation when posted live, for you review in its entirety. The concept here is that this is the master plan, which is a plan derived from the 2016 Facilities Assessment of all district buildings. So I know this is hard to read, and will be included in its entirety in posting. The plan is a large print page that lists all the district buildings, and uses codes to reference the 2016 Facilities Assessment Report accepted by the Board. This is a high-level plan that allows us to track major projects and discuss future facilities renovations. It lists all the major items to be considered with associated cost. So if you look a little closer at this master plan, there are columns to the far right that outline the costs associated with the projected renovations at each building over the next 10 years. As you can see, Arrowhead is slated for about $14 million, whereas Woodland for almost $3 million. In order to demonstrate a commitment to addressing these matters outlined in the plan, the information in the upper right-hand corner displays what the Board has authorized in year-one work, which is part of the reason why we're not in Arkola with this presentation, which we would normally hold, and with the investment of $8.5 million, and has moved to the planning and bid preparation phase for year-two projects totaling $6.2 million. All of these decisions surrounding the master plan and any work associated with it is considered by the Board and approved, as outlined in the schedule to the bottom right. This schedule becomes important in the cycle of determination if the Board were to consider the renovation or building of a replacement school. Looking even deeper into the master plan, we can see that of the $14.5 million projected over the next three to five years for Arrowhead, $10 million of that involves major systems. While we have items such as carpet, acoustic tile replacement, and mason repairs, there is also need to upgrade the kitchen, address the four modular classrooms, accessibility matters, the electrical service, the roof, the HVA system, and a number of others. This 12.5-acre property located on Level Road is nested in the surrounding neighborhoods. This is a neighborhood school. Part of the overall decision when replacing such a significant number of major building systems is that you will never be able to leverage the associated cost savings that generally come with a well-designed, well-integrated set of systems in new construction. It should be further stated that while no decisions are being made this evening, there may come a point in our future discussions that may perpetuate us to get further professionals involved, if renovation or new construction were the considered path. The district's financial picture is before you. This slide was last updated in June of 2018, as part of the 2018-19 final budget presentation prior to the Board adoption of $109 million budget for this current school year. This chart is used regularly as part of our budgetary process, and provides the Board with a projection out in the next few years based on the proposed budget for the coming year, and knowns and estimates of revenue and expenditures going out. In terms of revenue, the district receives about 19% of our funding from the state, the remaining is from local property and other miscellaneous taxes. Given this fact, it is even more important to the Board and the administration that we hear from the public. Any decision related to the Arrowhead property will have direct impact on future budgets. The three biggest expenditure items on the budget are staff salaries, retirement, and benefits, in that order. Each year, we focus on driving down our expenses with a variety of cost-saving measures, including early retirement programs, staff reductions, refinancing of debt, greater controls on purchasing, and improvement purchasing, and improvement in processes, to just name a few. It should be known that we would continue to do these things regardless of the decision on Arrowhead. So I have shared the status of the district. Now let's talk about the future. Fundamental to any organization's future success is a plan on what it needs to do to improve, make things better, or realize a preferred future. This plan is our strategic plan that is organized into five core areas, including student growth and achievement, staff development, pupil services, and educational technology; Area Two, communications and community relations; Area Three, safety, operational technology, facilities, and infrastructure; Four, district operations, financial management, and human resources; and Five, co-curricular activities, extracurricular activities, and athletics. So, as a result of a recent review of the plan by a committee comprised of students, parents, teachers, administrators, and community members, we believe at a high level, we need to focus on the following objective areas abbreviated on this slide, and they include: to meet the needs of all learners through a focus on the whole child; implement a district-wide vision for STEM; to increase the access to academic, career, and extracurricular activities; to leverage our facilities' master plan to address and prioritize facilities' needs; to improve the effectiveness of hiring practice to recruit, retain, and develop top talent; and to improve our communications to position Methacton School District as a district of Our path forward will be a focus on the whole child as its fundamental basis. We will be focused on increasing academic and career-curricular options as well, and we will continue to position Methacton as a district of choice. When we begin discussing our future, and as we go through our most recent strategic planning process, we utilize a very simple but effective concept commonly used in business called the SCOT analysis, which stands for strengths, challenges, opportunities, and threats. For this conversation this evening, I want to focus on opportunities and challenges that I believe the board and the public need to be aware of and that either directly connect to the facilities or have substantial potential impact on the district. I do not want to ignore our strengths, but simply state that our strengths lie in the support from our community: the desire of our students to succeed, the support of our schools and our children by our parents, the talents and commitment of our teachers and staff, and the design of our programs and services. In terms of threats to the public school entity, we commonly lump them into challenges category. So let's start talking about these opportunities and challenges. If we look into the terms of programming, the Pennsylvania Future Ready Index is Commonwealth's new measure for success for public schools. Previous to this measure, we use the school performance profile. The index looks at performance on state standard assessments, on-track measures such as English language proficiency and other college and career measures. The index can then be used to measure schools and districts against those metrics that the state believes are important at that time. Moving forward, and likely similar to the Future Ready Index, there will be new metrics and measures that our teachers, schools, and districts will need to address. Having the flexibility of space allows for the organization to maneuver through political and state policy changes that appear to happen rather frequently. One thing is for certain: changes in the measures of success will be a challenge for Methacton as well as other districts in the Commonwealth. STEM education is not new, STEM standing for Science, Technology, Engineering, and Mathematics. Methacton has been a leader in STEM as depicted by numerous success stories in competitions like the state and national science fairs, to name a few. Methacton is, however, equally effective but silent on the enormous amount of STEM activities that the programming has been, that has been going on for years and that continues to evolve and expand. One of our major initiatives in K-12 is to bring together all of these great teacher-led efforts and develop greater collaboration with business and industry as well as higher education and showcase the already extraordinary efforts. The district, like in years past and at other levels, the district with the support of the Methacton Education Foundation is looking to revision the elementary libraries. With the help of our librarians and capitalizing on previous library revisioning success, as we've seen at the high school, as well as our COLA and Skyview, we will see the libraries as integral spaces that provide programs to support all academic and co-curricular areas, as well as playing a vital role in STEM education. It should be shared that not only, that not all of our elementary libraries are the same, with Arrowhead Library likely our greatest challenge, given the open-space design. Inclusive practices is an approach to teaching that recognizes diversity of students, enabling all students to access the greater educational curriculum, fully participate in learning activities, and demonstrate their knowledge and strength. Inclusive practices embraces a model in which all students participate in the regular classroom learning community, where they can benefit from the support of both general education and special education teachers. Depending on this implementation, it could have an impact on space. International Baccalaureate, or IB, programming has been discussed administratively for a number of years. IB is designed to be different in encouraging students to think independently and drive their own learning that can lead them to some of the highest-ranking universities around the world, become more culturally aware through the development of a second language, and be able to engage with people in an increasingly globalized, rapidly-changing world. IB, often considered a step above the advanced placement curriculum and test, is an opportunity that internally, the administration has considered in conjunction with that of our efforts in STEM. While IB has been considered an opportunity for the future, it is likely to be a greater discussion in the next three to five years. Permanental engagement is a critical and crucial aspect of the success of our students and the organization as a whole. While we believe that we have enormous support from all of our community, the engagement in areas such as English language development and parents of students with special needs are critical and will require us now and over time to create more opportunities to further engage parents in ways that we have never done before, through modeling, through coaching, through group discussions, and reflective measures. Full-day kindergarten has been a discussion topic for at least the past five years, if not longer. The administration has done significant research, presented options and costs to various school boards, and remains with a half-day kindergarten program today. So however, in recent years, we have seen an increase in the number of schools implementing full-day kindergarten programs, with North Penn recently announcing that they will implement full-day K beginning in 2019-20. While we can point to a number of academic reasons to have full-day kindergarten, the research shows that the value of full-day kindergarten supports the socialization and behavioral aspects to a greater degree, providing substantial support for the greater academic success in the primary grades. Furthermore, more time earlier in life can be considered to help negate some of the later academic and behavior issues that occur, leading to more costly and challenging interventions and supports. Considering that public schools in Montgomery County are generally some of the most respected and highest-achieving districts combined in the Commonwealth, and that sixteen of the districts out of twenty-one public school districts in Montgomery County will have full-day kindergarten at the start of the 2019-20 school term, and further considering that the four other districts in the North Monco AVTS Consortium, which Methacton is a member, which, this provides a potential consideration as an opportunity and a potential challenge. The board may want to consider full-day kindergarten and as an opportunity and challenge in possibly making a decision on what to do with the Arrowhead property in the future. Just some food for thought: certainly, full-day kindergarten would provide new opportunities for some of our more challenged students to develop, but at the same time, if all of our schools around us geographically have full-day kindergarten, how will Methacton fare with the turnover of housing and other communities to new families? Another question: how might the absence of full-day kindergarten impact the district long-term? This is a challenge and may even be perceived as a potential threat to the current success of the program and future financials. Again, I'm simply providing some opportunities and challenges. This may sit with you well and may not. When we look at operations, one of the challenges associated with a potential closure decision two years ago of schools would be related to the future flexibility and scheduling needed to address some of our opportunities and challenges that we discussed here this evening, and those that have yet to be thrust upon us by mandates from the federal government or state government in the future. Certainly, there is reason to be efficient and responsible, but part of that responsibility is making sure that we do not take on more than we can reasonably handle today or into the future. As I spoke earlier under the strategic plan, safety and security is at the forefront of much of our facilities' master planning and could become more significantly prominent in these discussions, considering the high-level options on the table. Along with the safety is campus configuration and parking and traffic. Part of our look into the future needs to be centered on improving the safety and security while considering the experiences on these campuses. Anyone who has driven their child to school, or a student that takes the bus, knows exactly what I'm referring to. While one might consider these items as opportunities, they too are opportunities and challenges to address each campus. One thing we imagine is, what would traffic, what would the traffic pattern be like adding another three-hundred-and-fifty students to an already-existing campus? Would we have enough space in the front of the building to address unloading and loading of students? Would we be able to handle the increase in the number of cars converging on the campus at any one time? These should not be discouraging thoughts to the board or the public, but are the things that we as administration will face, will be faced with in answering depending on the path forward. Every Student Succeeds Act, ESSA, is the federal act that, when receiving federal dollars, such as Title I, to help economically disadvantaged students, we must comply with, we must comply with, under all the funding and major underlying principles of ESSA, is equity. Its fundamental basis is equity in funding, equity in facilities, equity in teachers, et cetera. So when we think about the decision forward, we need to consider if all of our facilities or similar grades provide equitable access and resources and can provide the space and utility to deliver the Methacton programs and services. State funding is a very, is an ever-changing matter. Thus, in the place, I place this in the challenges category, given the fact that the equity I share, that the equity I shared with you on the federal level is paramount in the new funding formula that deals with the new state dollars that come to public schools. The push has been and will continue to be that more state funding be drawn away from districts like Methacton and given to other districts in the Commonwealth less fortunate, thus having a potential negative impact on the district. In terms of services, we are implementing a pilot program at our COLA intermediate school beginning this month called REACH. That is addressing the need for more intensive mental health services due in large part to the increase in mental health needs, not just in our schools, but in society in general. Likely success of this program will funnel itself into similar setups in each of our buildings, thus requiring space that, well, doesn't exist here today, but is going to be needed in those buildings. So this is seen as an opportunity to support our students' mental health needs, keep them engaged in the local schools, and help them best succeed. It is also a challenge in how do we fund these types of services and programs, and even if we were able to do that, where would we locate them, given the current space challenges? Physical education facilities in terms of providing adequate space and equitable space to deliver the physical education and other extracurricular-related activities for all students is also challenging. In three of our four elementary schools, the space allocated for programming and activities far surpasses that which is available at Arrowhead. An extended care program is designed to help provide students with kindergarten to fourth grade with a supervised and safe environment within the school setting. This extended care program would be able to support our kindergarten students who participate in half-day programs and provide before and after-school care for our facilities. This program could be operated by the district or a third-party provider. Considering our future and how we can sustain great programming and operations while tackling some of or all of our challenges and opportunities discussed here this evening, it is my opinion that our success in part will be in the hands of an alumni association that currently does not exist, as well as through the Methacton Education Foundation that has a resurgence and is on the verge of doing some extraordinary work in support of the teachers and students and programming of the district. So the discussion forward. Now that I've shared the opportunities and challenges, know that one of the major challenges in some respects lie in the decision on Arrowhead. We need to look more closely at the updated enrollment projections. What has changed since the last conversation on schools? What opportunities or challenges do we specifically want to consider to a greater extent? What financially, in terms of debt, do we need to consider? While this process may seem different than the last process that was specific to school consolidation, it is because, at that time, that was the conversation. It is much, much different today. If you recall, since the height of enrollment in 2007 through 2016-17 school year, the district witnessed a decline of eleven-point-four percent, or approximately six-hundred students. Following a lengthy process of evaluating enrollment projection vendors, the district selected Mylona and McBroom of Chestshider, Connecticut, and through their work, provided the board then with a low, medium, and high enrollment scenarios. Utilizing the medium scenario along with all the other information provided, and at the recommendation of me, Superintendent of Schools, the district determined that a one-building closure would be best. One might then ask, well, what has changed since the board then made that decision, only to close one school? Why would we consider closing another school now, just two years later? On this slide, I just want to reference that Mylona and McBroom will be with us on November twentieth, as I said earlier, during the work session, and will present the updated enrollment projections in full. However, I've included some of their slides in this presentation. So as part of the updated enrollment projections, unlike in previous projections, there are one-hundred-and-sixty-nine single-family attached units and thirty-five single-family detached units planned in the Arrowhead sending area. In addition, there are one-hundred-and-sixty-nine single-family detached houses and one-hundred-and-twenty-five single-family attached houses planned in the next five years in the Warseton sending area. These pipeline residential projects are believed to plan a significant challenge to the district as it plans for its future. If we look at the slide that we'll be discussing here in greater detail on the twentieth, that from the base figures to the base figures plus the pipeline projects, there is a potential increase between, between the two in 2027-28 school year of approximately one-hundred-and-seventy-nine elementary students. So if we take a summary look at the data from October 2016 projections, the September 2018 update with base and pipeline projects, we can see that in five years out, the first five years being the projections that are most accurate... five years being the projections that are most accurate, if the pipeline projects materialized as planned, we could see an additional 159 more students in our elementary schools, primarily at the Arrowhead and Warrsester sending areas. This is 159 more than was originally projected in 2016. Furthermore, considering the pipeline projections, we could have more elementary students in 2021-22 school year than we had when we decided to close Audubon. What is concerning is that at some point in the next four years, we will see a spike that will change the use of our space even without full-day kindergarten programming. While the projections are not designed to land us on a specific number, that we will have in the future, it is a projection that considers a number of factors and is based on experience in the field to help us better understand the trend in the numbers. In this case, the trend is slightly up and will level off. And as you can see here, that trend is further illustrated in K4 enrollment is based on the updated projection is headed back up to former levels. So what has changed? One of the best ways to help the public and the board understand where we were just two years ago is to reference some of the discussion that occurred then, that eventually led to a vote to close one of the elementary schools. There were a total of eight scenarios proposed. Scenario eight suggested that a closure of Arrowhead and Audubon with a grade configuration and redistricting would then, with the then remaining three elementary schools, into a K3 schools scenario, which had projections that the enrollment in the last few years would render the decision not possible without expansions at the remaining elementary schools. So the scenario eight was further then developed to look at other grade configurations at the remaining schools, and they're listed here. A grade configuration of 4.6 at Skyview, a grade configuration of 6.8 at Our Cola, and a grade configuration of 8.12 at the high school. Under those options within scenario eight, it was determined that, based on structure of the program and the availability of space at Skyview Elementary School, that it was not feasible to place three grades in Skyview. The 2016-17 report did suggest that Our Cola Intermediate School may be able to handle a three-grade configuration. But what this chart does not tell you is that in order to do so, there would need to be substantial change in the delivery of our program. For example, the three-grade configuration would no longer allow for teachers to prep as they do now in their assigned rooms. As an example, a science teacher would not be able to prep in the room for experiments or other activities on the given day. There was discussion about achieving this result and the need to place art, music on cards, and music on cards. As shared in this slide, it was also determined that all teachers that had a scheduled prep would then need to go all the way over to Skyview, where there may be some vacant rooms to allocate faculty space for them. We would likely utilize the facility dining area as well in Our Cola, as well as a number of other unusual things that currently do not occur at Our Cola. But the thought was that it was possible. Now, please, don't get me wrong, I'm not by any means saying that this scenario was not possible when presented. What I am saying is that, and I'll say it here and now, is that the Our Cola school would be run more like a high school, and it would fundamentally change the way we deliver the middle-level programming for children in grades six, seven, and eight. Given the updated enrollment projections, I also questioned if this option is even any longer possible. We then had discussions on the high school holding five grades, grades eight through 12. The concern here was that reaching the nearly 96% utilization target, this was a very challenging matter, given the length of the building. If you've ever been, as an adult, to back-to-school night, getting from the east wing to the west wing is nearly impossible in the amount of time. Adding more students to that would increase congestion and create additional challenges. Not to say the least that many of the public, as well as the board at that time, did not support this option because of age and maturity concerns. So then the question for the board now is what has changed? The question here is not can we do this, but what benefit would a consolidation with redistricting again provide to the overall Mathacton experience? To what end are we seeking? Maybe this is where we ask ourselves, what type of district do we want today and into the future? Maybe that is the fundamental question here this evening. So just to keep everybody in place, we've gone through a lot of information rather quickly, and there's a lot of detail on the slides that, you know, after this evening's meeting, you should take a look at and post your comments as you see fit. But just so you're aware, you know, the board and the public is challenged to consider what we ought to do with the Arrowhead Elementary School. And regardless of that, and the cost, the types of cost renovation and to accomplish this task, we need to consider debt. So when we look at that, we see that the projected cost of about $14.5 million is needed to renovate. We've been told that as an estimate, we could be considering about $25 million to build a new school based on the need for 75,000-square-foot building at about $333 per square foot. Lastly, the assumption is that a closure of Arrowhead would provide some cost avoidance. So a closure, what's critical about this slide, a closure will not however mean that debt will fall off. Sure, a build or a repair will extend our debt. Keep in mind that there are other master plan projects remaining regardless of any future decision on the Arrowhead property. So while there is a lot to consider, keep in mind that under the safeguards put in place for public schools under law for borrowing, Mathacton School District has the capacity to borrow up to $151 million prior to being required to go to the voters in a referendum for such approval. Lastly, it is important that the board recognize that we typically approach borrowing with a level funding approach, as indicated here, so that over time, we can best budget with old debt dropping off and new debt wrapping around. So the discussion further, given the three possible high-level options for Arrowhead Elementary School, the current status of the district and its mission vision and strategic vision forward, updated enrollment projections, age, configuration, and the need for the Arrowhead facility and other remaining properties, the 2017 information on the two-building closure, and considering future opportunities and challenges and finances of the district. Our next steps are really to hear the complete enrollment projections report presented and scheduled for November 20th, to hear public feedback on all the provided information, not only here this evening, but over the next several weeks, and ask the board at some point to narrow the range of options moving forward. And lastly, when that is determined, to schedule discussions and additional public feedback on those remaining options. With that said, this ends my presentation for this evening, and we'll end with those last two questions. Thank you. The board may return back to the stage. That ends my presentation, and we'll prepare in just a minute or two. Yeah, turn it off. And we'll prepare in a minute or two to hear public comment.
Thank you, Dr. Zerby. In planning our agenda for this evening, we weren't quite sure what sort of an audience we would be preparing for, hence having everyone sign in. It sounds like maybe we haven't had too many people sign in to speak this evening, so I guess anyone in numbers one through five who would like to address the board can come forward now.
My name is William Cashimer, with a K. I was a former school board member a few years ago. I was school director for 12 years until 2007.
State your municipality.
What is that?
We just need to know where you live, your address.
My address? All right. I'm a big, strong guy. 3121 West Germantown Pike. Host office, Eagleville, PA, 19403. But I actually live in Warrsester Township.
That's great. That's all we need to know. Thank you so much.
Oh, that's all you need? Don't I make any comments about what I see and hear after?
You're wasting your time, Bill. Keep going, boy.
Oh, really? Don't they want?
They got you on a clock, Bill. They got you on a clock.
And my time is up?
No, it's gonna be. Keep going.
Okay. I'm a retired carpenter, supervisor, and everything else. Who the heck built this lousy ramp with no railing? And who okayed it? That's awful.
It's part of the theater show that would be going on. It's temporary for a show.
This is temporary?
Yes, only for a theater show.
No handrail. I was injured on Mathacton property because there was no handrail. And I had a lawyer so-so. I didn't win the case, but I suffered injuries. So somebody's pretty dumb around here. Who ever heard of a stage sloping downhill? Now, I have difficulty walking now. I have a bad back, I have this, I have everything else. But this is stupidity and a cord, exposed cord here, somebody could trip over. What's going on? Where's the safety features? Don't anybody have any brains? You should be thinking about safety. You want to close schools, you want to build new schools. I think you have to put a stop to all this, all this building. And no kindergarten. We're not here to pay for children to go to school so the parents don't have to pay for the child to go somewhere else. But anyway, am I finished? Am I done? I can still talk? Oh, that's amazing. Okay. Well, I like to throw jokes out once in a while, too. It's something I like doing. Let me see. Update the enrollment. The enrollment is going up, and you expect it to go up and go up and up, and something about a pipeline. Is that an oil pipeline you're talking about? I don't know what a just pipeline. We need to build more schools. What does that mean? Pipeline of oil workers putting oil lines in, and then that's one of the justifications for building new schools? I don't understand pipeline. Okay, if you don't want to answer, that's fine, too. Let me see here. Elementary library. Yeah, that kindergarten, that hit me the wrong way. Now, I'm not financially disabled. Let me, I'll tell you that. Physically, I am, but not financially. But there's people who don't have money, and I was once one of them. I'm a displaced coal miner from up in the coal region, Luzerne County. We didn't have any money. I didn't even know there was a college. And it turns out, I hate like heck to say I was brilliant, but I discovered later in life that I'm a very intelligent person. And the teachers never praised us, they'd tell you to go to college because the parents would say, what's a college? The student would say, what's a college? Nobody was going to college, they're just trying to live up there. So anyway, it turned out, I have a high school education, but it turned out that I'm more intelligent than I ever knew, and that's what it's all about. So I think you're gonna see me here more often. Okay, thank you.
Jim Malick, Warrsester. I'm just, you know, I'm talking to you. So any comments I make, they're to you. Very disappointed, Dr. Zerby, very disappointed. Very biased presentation. Very biased. I'm gonna call this Skyview Two. That's what it is. Skyview Two, all over again. Because it was a slanted presentation away from closure and realignment. You know, supposed to be nonpartisan, non-biased, give all the options. Not well done. And I'm gonna look at you guys as like used car salesmen, because that's basically the way you're acting, as used car salespeople. In February 2017, your consultant recommended option eight, closure of Arrowhead and Audubon, and the board voted that down, and that was your recommended option from your consultants. M&amp;M, your consultants, also did your updated study. But Dr. Zerby glazed over what was wrong with the study. They recommended in the contract, and I'm pretty sure that you guys were the ones that recommended it, not using current data, not using up-to-date data. You guys said stop at October of 2017. Who knows why? I know why. You didn't want up-to-date data being used, you wanted old data being used, like old birth data, which you had to update. And you didn't use the Montgomery County Planning Commission housing data, so all your numbers were inflated. So that's why you got the numbers you got. Now, Dr. Zerby stated that you have some cost avoidance, some cost avoidance with closure and realignment. $10 million in years one through five is some cost avoidance? How ridiculous a statement is that? And then $20 million in years five to 10 is some cost avoidance? That's what I'm talking about. How ridiculous a statement is that? And he just glazes over it. That's what I'm talking about, being a biased presentation. Now, here's some facts. Costs $22,000. Costs $22,000 to educate one student in methactin, right? Our school board right now isn't paying their fair share of the tax burden to the tune of $300,000 that the taxpayer has to subsidize. That's it. We have to subsidize you guys to the tune of 300 grand. And now you're gonna ask us to come up with another $14 million to subsidize that as well. So I ask you guys to think about that. Now, you ask, what's this all about? It's all about politics. It's not about 14 million. It's about politics. You know, absent Dr., Mr. Earnshaw, everybody up there's got a kid or a couple of kids in the schools. So you obviously don't want to close any schools. It's gonna affect your kids. And that's why you should have told us all about that. It's a conflict, in my opinion. You got a board member over there at the corner made a campaign promise to everybody not to close Arrowhead. Mr. Navarette, well, he's not, you know, he's not gonna think about things objectively. It's a problem. And he's on Save Our Schools, another campaign ploy, telling people to come out to the meeting. Mr. Campaigner over there. So, you know, it's a problem. You got a May primary election coming up that you guys are worried about. So what this is all about, it's not about $14 million. It's about, basically, you guys wanting to build a new school. The $14 million is just to warm everybody up. As soon as you get everybody onto the $14 million, you're gonna tell everybody it's more cost-effective to build a new school. That's how you do it. Bring them in on the 14 mil and then say, "Oh, wait, it's more cost-effective for the new school." It's all Skyview Two all over again. Very disappointing, guys.
Dr. Malik.
Yep.
Anyone else? Mr. Andrews, please.
Good evening. John Andrews, Lower Providence. Here we are about 10 years since the Great Recession, and with some experts reasoning we are due for our next recession in the year 2020. I note it was in 2008 that your board, the board then, voted to build the unneeded Skyview School and do certain Arcola renovations. They were hypnotized by false claims of enrollment. This reasoning about the future has merit as we think about whether methactin enrollment will continue the drop that began in the lower grades in 2001, stay flat, or rise over the next decade. I note the major part of our enrollment is due to sales of existing homes to young families, and the current stability of those sales indicates enrollment is finally flattening out. And of course, we must consider how many classrooms are needed, what the district's finances are, and if any buildings can be closed. Annual births here have been down, and we're at 262 in the year 2017, well below the peak of 380 in the year 2000. That year was soon after the peak in new home sales. Thus, it is clear that we need numerous new homes for enrollment to rise a lot. I note that recent resale trends on national, county, and methactin levels are relatively flat due to many factors affecting both supply and demand. Overall, the above considerations reinforce my unique enrollment projection method, where I use the acronym H-E-M, standing for Housing to Enrollment Method. It totally uses housing sales data to forecast future enrollments, aside from apartment influences on the early grades. Compiled data for new and resale homes and apartments back to before the year 2000 are the inputs to the software. The results show an excellent match to actual enrollments over that past 20-year timeframe. Thus, I have confidence my projections are as accurate as future predictions of home sale activity. In contrast, cohort survival projection methods are accurate only for the short term and have difficulty with projections for new homes. My current enrollment projection of 2311 K-5 students in the year 2027 to '28 is based upon a high-rate model of both planned and likely new homes and resales. It represents an upper limit, and it's above the latest numbers that I'm aware of from your M&amp;M consultant. I utilize Dr. Angstead's capacity data, and methactin has a capacity of 2,310 students in our elementary and Skyview Schools, exclusive of Arrowhead and Audubon. Thus, I conclude we need only those schools through at least the year 2027 and longer if enrollment is below these high-rate projections. Based upon this conclusion and serious financial savings to operate and renovate Arrowhead, I support closure of that school and use of Skyview as a grade K-5 school, along with the three remaining elementary schools, which would revert to their former K-5 configuration. This is educationally better. The Arrowhead school layout and design are obsolete. Closing, demolishing it, and then keeping the land for a future school saves considerable costs of administration and renovation. Skyview would take all Arrowhead students as it is closest to the current Arrowhead sending area. The Worcester School would keep its students for an additional year, grade five, rather than sending them to the distant Skyview Building. Some may raise issues about Skyview and Arcola.
Mr. Andrews, can you please wrap up?
Yes, such as cafeteria crowding. Those issues are minor and solvable as by use of gymnasiums, as is done in the elementary schools. Thank you.
Here's Mr. Bickelman.
I'll wait till you have all that. Don't start the clock. I'm in the hurry-up offense. I was, that was a very biased presentation, Dr. Zerby. It was so biased, I was gonna come up here and suggest that you open Audubon tomorrow because of the lack of space and the space restrictions that you have. I thought opening Audubon tomorrow, that's the answer. That's how biased it was. Okay, I handed out a capacity report based on closing Arrowhead and making a K through three configuration with the sixth grade going from Skyview to Arcola. And if you look on there, you take the 388 kids out of Skyview, put them in Arcola, then you take the fourth grade and put that in Skyview, and the Arrowhead K-3 is spread through Eagleville and Woodland and Worcester. And you can see what the remaining capacities are at the end if you would do it this year, okay? Because you built Skyview in order to take care of 6,500 kids, okay? You have 4,790. That's what I got at the Education Committee, 4,790, because the October 1st numbers weren't available this past Tuesday, November 6th or 7th. So I didn't have the October 1st numbers like Dr. Zerby had to show the expansion of enrollment going up two kids. But you can see that doing that, you could, you can run with a K through three and then a 6, 7, 8 at Arcola. Did everybody at the board table, did the board hear the reasons for the sixth grade not going to Arcola? Did everybody hear those reasons? So there's no reason that sixth grade can't go to Arcola, because you have space galore at Arcola. When my two daughters went to Arcola, the teachers didn't do their prep in the woods. It was 6th, 7th, and 8th grade there at the time, and there was a lot more kids there. And the teacher prep was done in that building, believe it or not. So that reason for teacher prep, and if that's the only reason you come up with, there's no reason sixth grade can't go to Arcola. No reason. And I hope all nine board members realize how weak that reason was. Weak. A science teacher, really? Can't do prep for his lab? You can't work that out? That was terrible. So Malona McBroom, who we paid a lot of money to be our consultant, said that we could close two schools. We could close Arrowhead, and we can close Audubon. But the board said just close Audubon, which is in my community. But you could have closed two. Attached to this paper are all the educational opportunities that our consultant came up with in closing Arrowhead along with Audubon. Educational opportunities that they came up with, our consultant, that we, did we pay $50,000 or $60,000 to them? So if you go to this configuration, K through three, four, five, six, seven, eight, you can save $1 million a year in operational costs. That's reduction of staff and everything else that goes along with closing Arrowhead. You can save $14 million over the first five years and $22 million over the next 10 years, and you can save $25 million because you don't need a Skyview Two. Please make a non-political, common-sense decision. Everything I've heard or I've said here, I've picked up at coming to these meetings for four and a half years, okay? And I haven't heard anything about the excess 36 teachers yet.
Mr. Bickelman.
That fact has been muzzled.
Please wrap up. Thank you. If there's anyone else who's interested in speaking this evening, please feel free to approach the podium.
Good evening. I'm gonna just piggyback what you said as far as commons. Oh, it's Krista.
Your name and municipality is all we need.
Lower Providence Township.
Thank you.
Thought it goes to Arrowhead. Go Arrowhead. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna go off the common sense thing for a moment and just think about this from a bigger horizon and step back for a brief second. And I feel a little bad for you guys, because some of the predecessors and things that happened before, I wasn't here for. I don't know what happened, such as athletic facilities. So I was just doing a little research when I was sitting here tonight, and 2015, give or take, there was $3.5 million in athletic facilities that were improved upon, taken care of, the whole nine yards. And one of the reasons I read was because the kids get shin splints. Shin splints. Let's do new athletic facilities because of shin splints. I know it goes deeper than that. I understand that. 41 years. It was shown up there on the board, 41 years of no major renovations. 41 years? I apologize. I don't know anybody personally. It's not the type of guy that I am. I'm just going off what I read. So don't take anything personally, and I know you won't. Superintendent Dr. David Zerby welcomed a simple guest and noted the groundbreaking, this is about the athletic facilities, a moment that some have been waiting nearly 20 years for. 41 years. Let's think about this. Common sense, we're all educated individuals, 41 years. I think I'm getting my point across here, but we've been waiting 20 years to spend $3.5 million on athletic facilities. 41 years.
Hi, Kelly Arno in Lower Providence. Wasn't really planning on saying anything tonight, so excuse me if it's a little jumbled. I have three daughters who go to Arrowhead, a son who will be going there in the next two years, and I volunteer there about once a week, sometimes more, sometimes less. So I see what's going on in that school, and we are incredibly proud of that school. I live in the neighborhood right behind Arrowhead. And just a note about that neighborhood, I know for myself and some of my neighbors who are also here, the school was a major, major selling feature for us buying in that neighborhood. We really stretched ourselves to afford there, knowing we were getting a neighborhood school, and that means a lot to us. That neighborhood was built in the 1970s, and it is comprised primarily of original owners still. Those owners are now in their 80s and 90s. They are slowly moving out, and the families that are moving in don't have kids at Arrowhead yet, but they have babies, they have toddlers, they have children who will be there soon. Just something to take into consideration. There's, it's a very large neighborhood back there, as I'm sure you know. That neighborhood particularly, but not just that neighborhood, Lower Providence, Worcester, the home sales are driven by a great school district, and that's what we have. And if we don't continue to provide this excellent education, the home sales are gonna drop. People are not gonna be moving in. The school district's gonna suffer as a result. The tax base will go down. People won't be paying as much. It's not gonna work out well. In addition to the new construction, I mean, I think the enrollment projections, quite honestly, I've always felt like they have not included the turnover as well as it probably should have, because there is gonna be a large turnover, turnover of owners. There's definitely upgrades to be made at Arrowhead. There's no denying that. As I said, I'm there at least once a week, often more. There's definitely things to be done. However, I'm a former teacher. I taught secondary science. I've never seen children as happy to be at school, to feel as loved as the kids I see at Arrowhead, even including the other schools in methactin. I've gone to several schools for kindergarten registration now, and there's a drastic difference from one school to another of a family-like atmosphere, of a caring atmosphere. And I just want to commend our teachers at Arrowhead for providing that to our students. The kids at Arrowhead gain a love for learning that I've never seen elsewhere. I've taught in two other surrounding districts. It's not like anything I've seen or experienced. It's just a totally different environment for those kids. So I do want to say thank you to you for not only the policies of trying to keep class numbers lower than the requirement, but also taking into consideration the needs of the teachers and the students. As a science teacher, I totally get the example you were giving about prepping. If you don't have space to prep, you can't prep for labs. The kids can't have the labs. We can't push that STEM curriculum like we want to. So I just really want to say thank you for taking into account the considerations of our students. Thanks.
Hi, I'm Katie Thiel from Lower Providence, and I first want to echo what the previous speaker just said. My children also go to Arrowhead. I have a, well, my one son goes to Arrowhead, but I also have a four-year-old and two-year-old coming up in the wings, so I'll be at Arrowhead for a while, hopefully. And I do want to echo that Arrowhead was a selling point, and it was actually this like huge bonus when my son started going there. And we were actually told by one of our neighbors that it's like this, like, this real treasure in the heart of where we are because of the community that it creates, and it's absolutely true. We have had a better experience than we ever could have hoped so far with my son at Arrowhead. So I do want to say that, and it has everything to do with the teachers who are there and the community of methactin and of Arrowhead. So, and I want to say that also, talking as a teacher, I currently work at a virtual school, so of course I sit here, I'm like, "I wonder how many kids you lose to cyber schools." I don't think you lose many, because I don't come across them. But I work at a cyber school right now, but I've worked in Upper Perk, I've worked at Upper Darby, and I appreciate how much work and some of the thoughts that go into things. And I want to say that I, if the decision comes down to full-day kindergarten or rebuilding a new school- a new school for Arrowhead, I would not support a full-day kindergarten. I would more support a new building. Because even though full-day kindergarten is a selling point, it wouldn't make or break my decision to move into the, the district. But seeing us meet and decide to close one school and redistrict, and then two years later start debating closing another school and redistrict, when some kids, like in Arrowhead, they're still, okay, he was an Audubon kid, he's an Arrowhead kid, they're still trying, all becoming an Arrowhead kid. So then doing that again is gonna be really harmful to the environment and to the culture of our kids, and then we'll have more time to get over that. I also do wanna say, seeing the possibility of an 8-12 school really makes me uncomfortable, because the mind of an 8th grader is so much different than that of a 12th grader. It's not appropriate academically from any experience I've had, and I've taught 8th graders and I've taught 12th graders. And I don't see how that would be very beneficial at all. And I do also just wanna say that the safety of Arrowhead, the safety of the actual school building, I know sometimes it is a benefit to have the doors for every school, but walking in there and the thought of school safeties of the environment that we are right now as a nation, it is something to consider when thinking about how you're refurbishing and making it safer. So I just wanna say that I would support a newer building. I wasn't here for SkyView 1.0, so I will say that, I moved in afterwards. But it does make sense based on, I don't know, to me, I would just support that, I feel like I need to say that, too. Thank you very much.
I don't know that we have anyone else that has signed in, but please, that does not preclude you from being able to approach the podium to speak. If you're here and you have something you'd like to share, please do so.
Good evening. My name is Sophia Farm. I'm from Lower Providence. I just want to echo some of the comments here. I have three children. All of them have gone through Arrowhead, and we have a very good experience with Arrowhead. We love it. It's a small community school. You know, everyone knows each other and very supportive. We are, the parents are very active and engaged in supporting the school, in volunteering, in all kinds of activities. So, and I'm happy that, you know, the new homeowners who are coming in, that is such a strong selling point for them. And just to echo, you know, what's going on around our community, there is a turnover. When we first moved in 20 years ago, we didn't have any children. So we started there, you know, it was a new development, about 20 houses. Right now, you know, there is a turnover rate. We have, just in the past year, we see three houses, you know, so, and new family move in. And quite a few of them are, you know, married couple, who are looking forward to starting a family in the community. And recently I talked to one of the neighbor, and she said that having a community, a neighborhood school, and the Methacton School District is the selling point for them. And she had told me that, you know, friends of her age group are also, you know, looking into moving into the district because of the strength of Methacton School District and the quality of education that, you know, the district, you know, offer. So, as a property owner, I would like to continue that, because it does affect all of our property values, right? I mean, it goes hand in hand. We don't wanna see a decline, so I think going forward, that should be, like you said, you know, the mission of the school, providing a quality education so that our children could be competitive, you know, when they are done with high school and, you know, going forward. It's a very important thing to keep in mind. And I do understand that 41 years without putting money assigned to, to address some of these, you know, physical deterioration of building, it's a, it's a, it's not, you know, it's a question, it's like, what happened? Why wasn't, why, why wasn't Capital Improvement Fund set aside for these issues? Why are we, you know, kicking the can down the road, so to speak? But going forward, I do see that you probably need to look at a new construction and get a cost-benefit analysis, you know, what, what would a new structure look like? And, you know, duly noted that the layout of Arrowhead is really dated and maybe a problem, you know, given our current security and issues in the nations. But there's a lot of good things, you know, about Arrowhead, about the school district. So I take that as a good sign, moving forward, keep doing the good work, but correct things that have not been addressed, and together as a community, you know, we can move forward and solve this issue, but we have to do it together. Thank you.
Okay, if we don't have anyone else at this time that wants to approach the podium, I think I'd like to also offer this opportunity for the board members to ask any questions of Dr. Zerby of the presentation, of offering up thoughts on this so that we can continue this discussion and conversation.
Thanks, Kim. I do have some questions for Dr. Zerby. When he, actually, sorry about that. Was not exactly ready right at the second. One of the, one of the points I do wanna make is that when we talked about the class-size policy, that's something that the Policy Committee is considering, I think, at some point in the future. I'm glad you pointed that out, but the policy is that, but the administrative guideline and the support of the board and the decisions have been made around the K2 being 22. And one thing I would sort of like to understand is, you know, not necessarily for today, but also the infant, the impact on, on that values, on the class size and the elementary, you know, what, you said it's generally the going rate or the going class size, but the benefits for, is K2 the right cutoff for the 22? Or should it be K3? Or should it be K1? I don't know. But that was just one comment for future consideration. I'm just sorry. So the slide related to homeroom space eligibility, honestly, this is Slide 22 in our packet. Struggled with this one a little bit, I know you changed a little bit. What, the, where I'm looking at is SkyView, we had 14 special ed eligible, and now we have 20, two years later. And then our COLA, we had 19, and we had 22. So what I, what I, I guess I'm trying to understand is when we talk about eligible space in the SkyView or our COLA, where granted, most of the potential capacity would be, what does that mean for, when it's, when it's available for a homeroom? I imagine we're not having a special education class with 22, 25, 30 kids at our COLA or SkyView. So when you have a homeroom that has 25, 30 kids at SkyView or our COLA, after a homeroom, you don't have that same capacity. So I don't understand how that translates. I just would, I just want clarity, I don't need an answer now, but I think that, that confuses the issue a little bit, that when we just talk about homeroom eligibility, those eight minutes is not really what we're concentrating on. Try to be quick. On the full-day kindergarten slide 31, you referenced the, I forgot, it was 16 out of the 21 schools in Montgomery County. Just for clarity for, for everybody, are they all full-day kindergarten for all students? Or are they a mix of partial elements where, you know what I'm asking? Okay, so the answer was, Upper Perk had half and full day, the rest of them are offered to all students for full-day kindergarten in Montgomery County? I think that may be it on this one. So, we go to, I think, I know this is what you presented, but I would sort of like to, when we go to Slide 40, when we start talking about the scenarios, it sort of pops out, it doesn't really, I know you explained that these were the scenarios that were presented a couple of years ago. I think we should just have a little more clarity on that slide, somebody that's just reading this without seeing the presentation. Yeah, I agree, certainly I'm not a supporter of the 8-12 configuration. And I do think one thing that maybe we talk about at a future time is that the K5 recommendation that's come from Mr. Andrews for several years now is something that, if we do pursue other alternatives, is something that I think we should at least put on the table, certainly more than an 8-12 high school. You made a comment that the, I think there was, I will say, from a comment, there's a little exaggeration on the support for the scenario 8. I don't sure that, it was a scenario that was offered by M&amp;M. I don't see it necessarily, it was a scenario that was asked for by the board. There was a lot of caveats around the scheduling, extreme scheduling without really a plan around the scheduling, so, you know, that, that's something that obviously would have to go deeper if it's something we consider no matter what happens. But you made the comment, like a high school with the three-grade model. So if you could expand on that at some point, and the only other comment I would make, maybe that's not the truth, I shouldn't say that, I may make a couple more, but, when we talk about the, the 4793 students to 4795, the interesting thing about that, when you look at it, is that we had 422 seniors last year that graduated and obviously dropped off our, our Methacton population. And traditionally, the kindergarten class moves to first grade, and there's always an additional jump, jump of the number of kindergartens into first grade. In this case, it looks like it's about 72 from last year to this year. So that's an expectation. But we have 281 kindergarten kids starting this year. So that, the 422 have been replaced, replaced by 281 kindergarteners. So all things being equal, you would expect that you would pick up some first graders that you would have seen a decline in the population this year. What it does indicate, maybe it's a fluke this year, and I understand there's regression analysis and so forth that you can look at this, I'm just making anecdotal comment at this point, don't shoot the messenger, but we increased in second grade, seven students, nine students in third grade, six students in fourth grade, 19 students in fifth grade, 13, 11, one. We lost 612 in the 9, 10, 11, and 14 additional juniors came in to become seniors. So that was the plus two. So that tells me that there was a, about 70, I don't know what the exact math is, I apologize, about 70 students that came into the district on top of the expected increase that we would have from K to, K to 1. So that's significant, it's a good reflection on the quality of schools, I hope, hopefully a good reflection on the quality of the land values, certainly part of the consideration. I think I need to stop, so.
A couple, couple things. Mr. Casmer, to address your comment about the pipeline, the pipeline has nothing to do with oil and gas, the pipeline was simply a reference to new housing being built within the district. So this is the pipeline of housing that's out there, and that was added to the most recent adjustment on the enrollment projections, so I just wanna make that clear. You're welcome. Couple things. Dr. Zerby, thanks for this tonight. I think it's Slide 23 where you showed the status of all the facilities in the district and the years when we last did major renovations, and certainly, as somebody else pointed out, 41 years is a, is a long, long time without renovations. I do, I do like the plan that we're on right now with this master plan, addressing some of the major deficiencies within the district. There's a comment made, it's been made multiple times, about SkyView. I prefer to think of this discussion as not a repeat of SkyView, but a repeat of Eagleville. Eagleville, the original Eagleville building, building was, I think, opened in 56 or 57? We went 45 and 46 years, and when that building reached end of life, it needed to be replaced. We seem to be in a similar situation now. Paul, you, thank you for your comments on the capacity, I think that's an important piece. Certainly, there are very few pieces of information that have changed since the last discussion was had about closing two elementary schools, and I think that's really what should form the basis for our discussion. One is capacity, and two is enrollment. And certainly, I guess we'll hear more for, from Malona McBroom, so I'll, I'll reserve any comments on enrollment until they are here. I don't think it's any secret, I've been a very loud proponent of advancing our district, deciding what we wanna be as a district, what we wanna offer, how we promote our district, how we make our district attractive to people that wanna move here, young families that are deciding. Personally, I moved to Methacton because my wife was from the area and said, we will be in Methacton. My wife, my wife teaches within Methacton, we moved again, we stayed in Methacton, and my kids go to school here, I'm proud to be here. The, I think the push to full-day kindergarten really needs to be considered this, by this board, and I'll actually throw down a challenge here tonight, that in the context of this whole discussion, clearly we don't have the capacity to do anything beyond the small pilot programs with full-day kindergarten in our current scenario. But I'd like to, I'd like to challenge the 10 of us to consider what our plan, our implementation plan is gonna be for full-day kindergarten as we take on this challenge with Arrowhead, and how we're gonna bring that to be a reality. I'd like to see that at the forefront of these discussions. Clearly, we're falling behind. 16 out of 21 districts in Montgomery County offer it, we don't, but yeah, we're still, we still wanna consider ourselves a shining star. I think we need to make that change. We're doing a lot of other really positive things, the REACH program that we're piloting at our COLA this year is fabulous, I like what we're doing. And all these programming changes require space. And, you know, we can compare to the buildings that we had 30 or 40 years ago and the school population that we had 30, 40 years ago, but educational models have changed. We do a lot more with special ed than we've ever done before, there's a reason that special ed costs are rising more than at any other time. It still requires space. So, that's right, and money, that's right. But just one last comment, you, you made a, I guess, quite a lengthy discussion about the, what would be required to support three grades in our COLA. And like you said, I think it would require a fundamental change in how we deliver programs and what the educational experience would be for our students, and I think that's a, that's a huge challenge for us. If we were gonna go to that model, would it need to be collectively bargained with the I know, but.
There are certain parameters in the collective bargaining agreement that would be challenging to implement, given the current state of, of the, of the agreement and the, the rate of speed that you would wanna make these types of changes. So they'd have to coincide with each other, and that would, that would require some, some lengthy conversations as well as possibly some concessions by the board in order to make, you know, a consolidation like this a reality.
One last comment, then I'll promise, I'll give it up. The debt analysis that you showed, this is, I think it's a good, very basic look at an attempt to keep a level debt. Certainly, you know, we've looked at this year with the master plan, we're looking at numbers that are under the original $8.5 million that were out there, based on the projects that we've selected, what's important, how we prioritize things. Any effort by this board to undertake any significant renovation or rebuilding is always going to require careful attention to how we load up our debt in this district. Now, I've been a very vocal advocate for, or maybe opponent of the way we've done this to date, because everything that, right now, is back-end loaded, right? We are loaded up until probably 2025, and then beyond that, we will still have obligations to our other facilities beside, behind, anything that we do with Arrowhead. It will require a reprioritization of what we do with the master plan work. I'm happy to be a part of the property committee that's going to discuss that and make recommendations as a board as to how to proceed, but I think that is our biggest challenge financially, is how we structure any debt that we would take on in any future consideration.
Thank you, and thank you, everyone, for your comments this evening. I will keep this pretty quick. The first comment slash question I have is in regards to capacity. You'll hear sometimes mentioned from members of the public about the capacity in our COLA and the excess capacity that we have. I just would like to have a discussion, and, you know, this would be something for Dr. Zerby and maybe Mr. Fretz, as well as the building principals, to get into a discussion of practical capacity and PlanCon capacity. Because I can tell you from looking at Woodland, from personal experience, going from a little over 300 kids before we closed Audubon to now having 459 kids is quite a substantial increase to that school, and they've had challenges. Now, couple that with PlanCons capacity, that, oh, we could put 625 kids in that school. I would like to see 625 kids in that school with our class-sized policies that we have now. Show it, I mean, show it to me. I mean, there would be kids sitting in the hallways, I mean, I think that we need to, when certain things are brought up in public, I think we need to dispel some of the things that are taken as fact. So I would like a discussion in the future, I'm not asking for this now, regarding actual and working capacity and PlanCon capacity, because I think that they need to be addressed, and I don't think that the, necessarily that the public understands what's, what's being talked about there. Ralph briefly touched on the debt analysis. I was just curious in, and again, I don't need answers to these questions now, but in the future, if we were to do work on Arrowhead, whether it be the 10 or 15 million to repair or the 25 to build new, what does that do with the existing master plan items that are in those years? Just looking at that one chart, I don't know if Arrowhead then takes priority and all those other projects get bumped back, if we're increasing borrowing above and beyond, looking at that chart, it doesn't look like it. So if we could have a much more detailed debt analysis as to what is really included in those numbers. And along the idea of the repair versus build new, I'll keep most of my comments quick here. The Skyview 2.0, this board, and I've said this for the three years I've been on here, can only be responsible for what is in front of it now. We cannot be responsible for prior mistakes in building a building that may or may not have been needed, whether items were, you know, a false enrollment report or any of that. We're talking about decisions that are in front of us now. So I think that in terms of building a new building, we really do have to look at this. As one of the members of the public said, we need to do a cost-benefit analysis of build new or repair for Arrowhead. What does build new mean? Is it the same-size school? Are we doing a bigger school? Are we doing, are we providing for full-day kindergarten in the new school? And when it comes to repair, do we repair just what's in the facilities report? Or do we do, you know, it's not the best configuration of a school, in my opinion. So does the repair cost of the 10 to 15 million dollars, can that be used in better ways to make that school more traditional? And nothing against the school as it is now, but, you know, these are the things that I think we need to flush out in terms of moving this process forward and narrowing it down. And that is all I have.
I just want to say thank you for the presentation. I want to echo my concerns regarding some of the capacity information that we have received, and I would like expanded information on the debt analysis also. But one of my concerns also is slide number 15, which includes the student services, especially on the elementary level. I have a concern, you know, we have to, as responsible board members, consider all options here, and my thoughts are, if we are to consider a reconfiguration of the district again, how can we keep providing the same level of student services, especially regarding special education in an elementary level? Regarding our capacity, I find that we wouldn't be able to sustain the same level of quality education that we would be providing right now. So if we could have more information on that.
So one of the things that I struggle with the most when, when facing this information is the lack of a crystal ball. You know, we're trying to predict what's going to happen in our district, and none of us has the capacity to do that. We're trusting in Milona McBroom that they are doing the best that they can to predict where population is going to go, but the reality is, none of us has a guarantee of that. So what I do is, I look at what are the known things. I look at slide 22, that tells us what space we currently have available for homerooms, and I see that that number is two. I look at slide 36 and look at the number of houses that are approved and ready to be built, and that's 500. And I'm no expert, I don't know how do you predict how many of those 500 homes will have children, and how many of them will then become Methacton students, but common sense tells me that 10% of those families have kids, and we could be potentially looking at a lack of space in our schools. I look at slide 41, and I look at the scenario eight that was included among many other options from Milona McBroom a couple of years ago, and I hear, again, what Dr. Zerby said earlier this evening, we can't look at scenario eight without fundamentally changing our programming. I look at all of the benefits of what we have to offer right now in Methacton, and I know that, that that can't continue with this scenario eight and the way that this is described. And I look at, there's a footnote to this slide that says, "This may no longer apply, given the updated projections." I'm not a gambling woman, and this isn't something that I'm willing to take a chance on. If we close Arrowhead, we are looking at compromising our current educational model. That's not something I'm willing to do. If we don't find a way to increase our available classroom space, I think we are also running the risk of compromising our educational programming. I know there's been comments about moving sixth grade back to our COLA, and I know that the document that was provided this evening talks about our COLA capacity based on PlanCon in 2006, and I think that it's important to note that our COLA of 2006, square footage-wise, does not equal our COLA of 2018. Part of the our COLA facility is now part of Skyview. So we can't undo and go back to what capacity was in 2006, it doesn't work. The thing that concerns me with, given this current status with the number of homerooms that we have and the number of new houses that are going to be built, is that we've lost room for innovation. We don't have room for things like full-day kindergarten, we don't have room for expanded STEM programming, and for whatever other things we may deem necessary for the students in our district. And I'm, I'm not okay with that. Comments have been made about, you know, the fact that we all have children in the district, and yes, I think that that actually helps inform our decision-making. But I'll be honest, I don't have a child in elementary school, and that's not a factor in my decision-making. One of the things that, that I try to use as a guiding thought, as a member of this board, as president of this board, is that there's no such thing as other people's children. So I'm not here to represent the needs of my children, I'm here to represent the needs of all of our children, and the taxpayers, and all of the families who own property in our district. And with that in mind, I cannot support any scenario that, that leaves us with three elementary schools. We have to look at renovate and rebuild, and we have to do it, we have to do it responsibly. We have to look at, we have to look at the financing, we have to look at our debt and how we're going to structure it. This is not an easy process, this is not something that we are going to arrive at in, you know, the next couple of weeks. This is going to be difficult, but I'd like to think that the 10 of us sitting up here are up to that challenge.
I just had a quick question about slide 22 with the number of spaces available, if the our COLA numbers represent the implementation of the new REACH program, if those, that, so that's already included in there, thank you. I don't have much new to say, except to echo some of the things my fellow board members have said, which is to echo the importance of looking at the practical capacities of our schools as they are versus the PlanCon capacities, especially given the programs that we think are important to offer all of our students, and to allow for looking and considering full-day kindergarten in the district. So I just want to echo what was already said that's important to me, thank you.
Thanks, just a couple of things. With respect to capacity, I mean, we have a capacity study, we have PlanCon numbers, I think we had a capacity study done two years ago. One of the things I think would be helpful, if we had what I'll call a utilization study, where you basically take every classroom available throughout the district, excluding the high school, and really chart out how that room is used throughout the day. Is it a full classroom of 22 kids? And really to get an understanding of what space is really available. I mean, because I was too, I too was confused by slide 22 and what it means by homeroom-eligible space, and I think if we have this kind of utilization study, that's going to tell us if, in fact, there is space available, or if there's not. And I think it's a pretty straightforward exercise that might take some time to pull together, but I think it would be helpful. On the full-day kindergarten, if we were calling that out as a separate slide in potential program, it would have been helpful to have cost information, estimated at least, and some thoughts on how that would be paid for. Because I believe there was a number thrown around a while back, and it, I believe, was a seven-figure number annually, so I think that would have been helpful. And then on the debt schedule, at some point, if you could just share with us what the assumptions are on future borrowings, because I thought at some point, the debt service requirements started tailing off in the late 2020s, and we weren't spending 10, 11% of the budget annually on debt service, I thought it started tailing off. But that schedule looks like, even if you were to close Arrowhead, the debt level stayed flat all the way out through 2032 and beyond. So just understanding the assumption on that would be helpful as well, thanks.
Okay, so what I would like to just say is, first, I'm very proud of where we stand with Methacton in our ranking. I think it's phenomenal towards the teachers and the staff, how hard they've worked with our children to make us be so high-ranking. So I love seeing that, and I say, publicize it on the website as much as possible. I want to also just let you know my background. Can you hear me okay? Sorry. I yell all day to senior citizens and home care, so I don't know my voice. My background is, I moved from Chicago here with three children, and then I had one child here, so I definitely believe with the value of the turnover and bringing children into the district and not only looking at the birth rate. So I do hope that with the Milona McBroom, that we see that they will look at the moving in and with children, but also looking at the pipeline that you had mentioned, putting that all into consideration is important. So I'm interested to really see and understand that. I also wanted to just say that I did a walkthrough of Arrowhead when I came onboard, and everyone explained the love they have at that school, it's beautiful, the huge community, huge connection, and I walked in and I definitely felt the love, but I also felt the need for repair. It was, it's not fair to those students. When I look at the other schools that I go through, they deserve that same environment, same safety precautions, but just that same enrichment that the other schools provide. So that's my opinion. But I also think I'm a, I am a taxpayer, and I'm a responsible one for the community, and I understand the difficulties of everyone, but I also think that we look at the debt analysis further, for sure, and discuss it in our financial committee. And then the last thing is, I am very confused, to be honest, with the slide 22, because I do believe, as you all know, that I'm a special education advocate, I just want us to show the community, all levels, how the rooms are being utilized. So I do, with the capacity study, but I do agree with Brian, the utilization of the rooms, because not every class is going to have 22. There'll be special education with five, there'll be learning support, there'll be gifted, there'll be varied programs, and I just want to make sure the community, not just the parents of the children in school, understand how the schools are getting utilized to their maximum capacity, so, thank you.
Now I feel like people can't hear me. Okay, I just, I'll be quick, and I just want to echo what Kim said. The bottom line is, in my mind, and I've been thinking about this for two years, and now tonight, to me, the decision is rebuild or renovate, and it's a difficult decision. And the bottom line is, and not to sugarcoat it or sound terrible, we do not have the tax base that Upper Marion has. So spending this kind of money is a big deal. We have to do it, that's the bottom line in my mind. We have to, like Kim said and others sitting here, need to figure out the best way to do it. It's one of the reasons I switched from policy to property this year, because I needed to be there to understand all these decisions that we're making. Should we be in this spot 41 years later? No, we shouldn't be. Something should have been done in the last 40 years, but they weren't. So in my mind, we need to get to that decision, not as quickly as possible, but we do need to make these decisions so our master plan can continue. We have Fidavia onboard that can help us, and in my mind, that's where we need to go. So if this was next steps, in my mind, that's the next step, rebuild or renovate. But I do think it's important for the public to understand, we are a bedroom community, and there has to be give and take, and that's the toughest part. We all want programming to continue the way it is and to also get better. As an educator, public school educator since 1999, education is not the way it was in 1999 as it is in 2018. You can't make the same decisions 20 years ago that you could make today or 10 years ago. So I appreciate the taxpayers' input and some of the people that feel that we are wasting money by doing this. Our job, when we go to all of our trainings as school board directors, the first thing they say to do is worry about the education of our students. In my mind, it's okay to have elementary schools that look different, some are going to be newer, some are going to be this, one person brought up, they felt that it was more loving at Arrowhead. If you look at Radnor School District, they have three very different elementary schools. One is gorgeous, brand-new, green, not brand-new, but newer, one is renovated in the middle, and one, Eithen, is definitely older with the open four-floor plan. I'm not saying that means I want to renovate, it means I want to discuss, what does renovation look like, and what does... It means I want to discuss what does renovation look like and what does rebuilding look like. And last, and not least, there's a gentleman who likes to bring up the fact that we all have children. Yes, we all do have children. And Mr. Earnshaw had children that graduated from here and are very successful adults. And many of us were affected by the closing of Audubon. Many of our children moved buildings and transitioned. I have twins. One transitioned much better than the other. All three of my children are doing phenomenally well due to the education they're receiving at Methacton. And every single person up here considers all children, all taxpayers. And we work as hard as we possibly can to give good education in an efficient manner. And that's exactly what we're doing here. And thank you, Dr. Zerby, for providing the information. Thank you to all of you. And if you could encourage people to give us input, we would appreciate it, because we are all in this together.
If I could just add one thing. I'm really talking to my fellow board members here. On page six, Dr. Zerby presented three options: renovate, rebuild, redistrict. We're going to hear an enrollment study on, at our meeting on November 20th. We don't have all that data yet. We have not seen that final report. There's also a public comment period following this meeting that runs through November 27th. So I think it's important, before we even think about closing the door on any option or reaching conclusion, we gather all this information. There's also a fair number of questions and information requests asked here tonight, so more information to come. I think three options are valid. I've not reached any conclusion, and I just want to get as much information as we can get to make an informed decision.
Does anyone else from the board have anything they need to share? Okay. Is there anyone else in the, the public that would like to have their four minutes and, and share their thoughts this evening? Okay. So with that, do we have a motion to adjourn? All right. Thank you, everyone, for coming out. Meeting adjourned.